My name is Keith McIntyre, pastor of the Independent Baptist Church of Monizuma. And just appreciate the work of Park Without Reverse and their ability to connect people with government. And I believe that Christians need to be connected with government and be aware of what's taking place. We've come alongside them to help for a couple of months to get the town council and board meetings out. But would like to invite you, if you don't have a church home, to the Independent Baptist Church in Monizuma. Our services are Sunday morning at 10:30. We have adult Bible classes and children's classes at 9:30. If we could ever do anything for you, you can contact me at MIB.church. Thanks for watching.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, we're saying we're gonna move with the budget hearing. This is to discuss 2025 budget.
Okay, first thing on the agenda today is the budget for 2025.
Do you have one of these spreadsheets? So this is my proposed budget for 2025 for your council members. You can see what changes I made in the last column from the year before. The general fund is healthy. It's good to go. They will fully fund this budget. I increased a few areas. I didn't have hardly any miscellaneous last year just for things that popped up just because we were kind of tight in some areas. We have gotten a few things down since we're not doing outside services anymore, since we're mowing in-house at the cemetery. That did free up a pretty good chunk. I did leave a little bit of money there in case we did need some outside services. That, you know, that would include like Gary fixing a leak for us or anything like that, or somebody happened to dig out the cemetery if someone wasn't around. So I left some extra money there. And then everything on the rest of it's pretty standard. I did ask for a little bit more in MVH just to cover a little bit more, but we're in pretty good shape on MVH and MVH restricted. So. If anybody has any questions, if anybody wants to move any money around. Oh, I gave you the little more money in the park, Barb.
Yeah.
I gave you $6,000 instead of $4,500 since you guys are talking about doing some different things over there. Awesome.
No, that, that'll go.
Yeah.
Looks good to me.
I'm gonna put Cody on speakerphone so he can say.
Doesn't look like any major, major stuff. The furnace is not.
Hey Cody, you're on speaker.
Hello.
Hello. Cody has COVID. He's sick, but he still wanted to listen in. Ken couldn't make it tonight, so you guys still have a forum because you have three board members. But there's really no action to be taken on your budget unless you guys want to make any changes. And we can still make changes before the final adoption next month as well.
He's not there.
Ken.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So. I don't know. He just told Carol he wouldn't be here.
Okay. Okay.
Do you guys want to scoot down?
Since we're all so far spread out.
I'm fine. I don't want to move.
A brick long-standing.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So do I need to?
So you just need a motion to, if everybody's good with the budget, you just need a motion to close your budget hearing.
Well, I'll make a motion to close it.
Is the public having questions about our budget? I know you guys don't have a copy of it, but. I'll second, I guess. Okay, Barb. We need to introduce Diane too. Take your vote.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Motion carrying.
So now is your regular meeting so you can introduce your new council member.
All right. Diane Balder is our new town board member. We have a full board now. It doesn't look like it, but we do. Cody's sick. Ken is not here, so please welcome Diane to the board.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
You're brave, brave girl. Everybody take a moment to look through the meeting for the last time.
On your minutes. Maybe it's gonna be just you and Barb on that. That will like be able to verify it, I guess. I guess Diane was at the last meeting too, so. Yeah. Should kind of happen. Cody, are you muted?
What's your name?
All right, is Mark, have you talked to Mark?
I, I have not heard back from Mark since what I've talked to you about.
Okay. All right, that's what I wanted to know. Okay. Yeah, we are. I'm not sure.
So we only sprayed one time?
Oh, well, now we've sprayed three times.
Okay.
But yes. Well, the sprayer was down a little bit and he got it back up, though. He didn't have to take it for repair. He figured it out. Just when he moved it from truck to truck and the problems arise. So.
Do I have a motion for approval in the minutes?
I guess I'll make a motion.
Okay. Oh, second. Any corrections? Everybody in favor, say aye.
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 Guess we'll go around the room. Okay. No comment over there? Vicki, do you have a comment? No, no question. Cliff?
I just, I want to know about the branches on West Street.
They've been cut.
They've been cut?
Yes, they've been cut.
It's done today.
Yep.
Stop by, stop sign on Middle Street is bent, kind of like.
Where on Middle Street?
Right here on the corner.
Okay, we'll let him know.
One down here is sitting on the road.
I know that Duke Energy took that down.
Did they?
Yeah, they were doing something to that pole and they didn't put it back up. So, yeah.
Well, we do have, we're ordering some new stop signs.
Middle Street stop sign.
Middle Street.
Sean.
Sean? Oh, did you just come to see your wife and I?
Being supportive. He's being supportive. Justin used to come and be supportive. No, he was here last month.
He was.
He does come sometimes.
Okay. Nothing, no public comment. Well, I'll make this announcement about the community breakfast. This is a public thing. September 22nd, from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM, they're having biscuits and gravy for $5. Pancakes and sausage, $5. You can get all of the above for $9. And this is going to the plumbing repairs at the Florida Township Civic Center.
Is that Wednesday?
Pardon?
What day is that?
It's Saturday.
Saturday, September 22nd.
Okay.
All right.
22nd is a Sunday.
Oh, is it? Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it says the 22nd on it. I thought it was a Saturday, Sean. Good call.
Well, I haven't yet. Thought that was weird.
Yeah.
Sunday. From 7:00 to 11:00.
It's a, that's during church time.
I know.
All right, but yeah, that is. Okay, I thought it would be a Saturday breakfast. Okay. I guess fireman's breakfast is around Sunday, so, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, we skipped September this year. We modified our work schedule a little bit this year.
Oh, okay. So when's your first one then?
October.
The Bridge Festival week?
It'd be the third Sunday, wherever that falls.
Yeah. All right.
Should be the end of the Bridge Festival.
Yeah. You're in old business now.
Old business. Stormwater project.
Oh, I'm just waiting on closeouts from Kristy.
Okay.
So it's pretty. She's, I know she's gone through round one of closeout. I don't know about round two yet.
The murals.
Cody, do you have a mural update?
Yes, Reagan is working on a secondary design for the other. And the funds were released by Archiviana to purchase the paneling for the mural on the 1900 building. And then once she determines what size or what size panel they're gonna get her or whatever, they're going to, that's kind of determine kind of how she plays around. She's gonna, I think, play around with ideas that she already kind of given us. Just kind of form them into, instead of postage sales, they do like, uh, it's like block.
The block that we kind of looked at. Yeah, that was nice.
I like that. Thanks, Cody.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Police station window has been installed and looks really good.
Good.
Does anybody want me to keep that drop box that was in the windows or a reason for me to keep it? It landed in here, so. I don't know. I think it's metal. Is it metal?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's metal. I don't know.
It's pretty heavy duty.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Anyway, it's here. We can talk about it.
Okay.
So, but yes, it looks really nice. The bill is on your bills tonight.
If anybody needs to drop anything off for me, they can just drop it off here.
Right, yeah.
In that box.
I like our box here, so.
That's true. We'll figure out something to do with that.
Yep.
Street lights.
Um, she's got a few more to install. She sent me a new contract for those last few.
Okay.
And I'm just waiting for her to, for them to come and do it. So there, I think there are four or five still to be changed.
Okay.
They're really nice at night, though. I do like them.
Yeah, mine looks not real bright, so it's good. Uh, Bradley Oak Street Alley. Has that been decided whether she's?
That was a closeout. That was kind of a Ken thing and he was gonna look at it. So I don't know.
Table, yeah, I'd say. Town Hall Door.
No movement.
No movement on that.
That's a Ken thing too, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Street Superintendent.
That was taken care of last month.
Okay. All right.
And the drainage grate was also a Ken thing.
Yeah. So any other?
Table, all of that.
All business. That's all I have here. Should we get some more estimates on the door?
I mean, we can.
I noticed Anderson's, like, Facebook posts.
Because we look at doors a lot.
It's coming up renewal by Anderson.
Let's, yeah, I'll, I'll see what I can come up with. I need to get some new quotes. I don't know. I just know that they, and I think the Case Meyer quote, I understand what they were doing, but it was just, it was just too much for us right now.
All right. Okay. New business or old business?
Or new business becomes old business, yeah. Um. The truck, Gary has picked up the truck, paid for and picked up the truck. That is all taken care of.
Salt.
Mm-hmm.
To get. Water. Water drive.
Mm-hmm.
Water adjustments.
Yeah, that's it.
That's a dead issue. Heart Trail Alliance.
I don't really know what's going on there.
Heard from Mark.
Well, I know.
Oh, he's on there.
Cody, you still on there?
You there?
Maybe he hung up on us.
Oh, okay.
You got out there, honestly.
Okay, sorry. I don't know if we hung up on you or whatnot. No, no word from Mark, correct?
No, no, haven't heard anything back from him since about a week ago.
Okay.
Uh, he had said that he's getting quotes from Brad on the walk or the trail light from Miller down here to Middle. He thinks that if they were to do that, that we would have to use Goochus, like, we would have to essentially cut in the Goochus, uh.
Parking area, their blacktop area.
Thank you. I'm like COVID right here.
So Miller's, are we talking about Miller?
So what Cody's saying is, you know how in Goochus they have that blacktop in the front? People park there during a service. Mark is saying that he feels like he would need to do his stuff through that.
Right.
At which they would lose those spots.
Well, are they just paint there?
I think Mark was talking that they would have to lose those spots.
Oh.
From the discussion Cody and I had, yeah.
Their code or whatever, they would have to have the actual main concrete thickness or whatever all the way down.
Yeah.
Which they're covering from Miller to Shawfire with that new bridge as part of what they're putting in already. So they would be connecting essentially from Miller down to Middle if, you know, they get the bid correct or whatever. Essentially, hopefully, what we're hoping for is for them to do that with the money that they were going to use for the heart connection.
Right.
Which he had budgeted at about 18 grand. So that would be a big portion of that for sure. So hopefully, when we hear back from him, that's good news.
Good. Good, Cody.
Okay, so has he talked to Goochus?
I don't think anyone has talked to Goochus. I think he's just saying that that would be the way it would have to work. So I don't know that that discussion has been opened. Do you think it's been opened, Cody? Cody?
No, not that I know of.
Okay, all right.
Oh, okay.
And who would have to make that?
I think that, I think that, I think that Mark would have to approach them. I think Mark would have to approach them.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I don't think they'd be happy at taking their parking.
Well, I don't disagree, Barb, so.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so that's where we're at on that. We, I did speak to Brad Thompson. He said he was about a month out. That was about a week ago. I know he did meet with Mark Davis and look at these sidewalks over here. So he's hopefully maybe about three weeks out on starting the sidewalks. We already pulled the trigger on.
Right.
Because we already pulled the trigger on this side.
The west side.
The west side of Main from Miller to the Fugue Building. And then the east side of Main from Civic Center down to, are we going all the way to Vine?
To Vine.
To Vine. Okay, that's what I thought. So that, he already knows about that and that's what he said. He's about a month. So that was about a week ago. So that's the update there. So I do have Brad's insurance already, so I don't have to secure that, so.
So that's gonna be about first part of October. Now, is, are we gonna use the excavator and kind of help balance that or is all gonna be?
Nope, that'll be Brad. He'll be doing the removal himself. Jase is gonna help. Jase has some different places where it's gonna go, because there's a lot of farmers. They'll take that for washouts. So Jase was securing some places. But as far as our excavator, Brad's got all of his own equipment and trucks and all that kind of stuff. So I don't think we have to provide anything like that for him.
The cement to your farms or they have to kind of?
They'll, they'll take it.
Okay.
Yeah.
When they do that, are they gonna lower the dirt between the sidewalks and the sidewalks? Or that water will run off the road and sit down the road? You know what I'm saying? Like whenever you, in the winter, when you get the ice and it freezes and it's all, everything stays on the side of the road because it can't run off down by Vine and all that area down in there.
Well, it needs to be graded out. All that dirt needs to be graded off there. That's already on the plans.
Lower than the road.
Yes, that needs to be in the plans. That's already in the plans.
Thickness is gonna be a little bit thicker too.
Uh, it'll raise it a little bit, I think. It'll just all be, it'll be all the same.
Right.
Which will help too.
Where's it gonna be at, Natalie, on South Lane from Watt to Vine?
You're gonna be from Central Street in the Civic Center to Vine. So, and it won't all be replaced because some of it is good.
The churches is good.
Right, so there's some, so we've gone through and they raided it all with the concrete guy about replacing it. So that's the plan. But yes, that dirt will come off the side of the road. We just talked about that the other day.
And that's just on the east side?
Just on the east side for now. The west side is a little different with the ditch. It's a little bit harder and it's a little more expensive to do that side because you're working over the ditch. So we're holding on that right now.
Okay, so any more questions on the sidewalk?
What about this end of the east side of Main on?
So we're waiting on Mark Davis and the Trail Association to see if they want to. If they want to spring for the eight foot over there and call it trail, then we're great with that. So we held on that. If they don't go with that, then we'll, we'll return to our original plan and we'll just pave it as it is and do the replacement plan we already had.
Just waiting for Mark to call it.
Yeah, we're just waiting for him to decide, for him to move forward. So, yeah.
All right.
It's in the plan.
And the tree's already been cut down. Obviously, it looks really nice. Lockery's did a really good job of cutting the tree down.
Well, it's all different.
If it was 2010, it's shocking when you first come.
Okay, so.
Been burning for a couple of days.
I'm gonna say that the equipment sale, the Cub Cadet, the Skag and all that stuff, this is entirely my fault. I was busy this month. I got the pictures from Jase. I did not advertise that. Ken and I talked about it last night. It just got away from me. So I will have all of those pictures on the Facebook page in the next few days for those three items with their minimum bid amounts. That's the Cub Cadet, starting at $300, the Greater Blade, starting at $800, and the Velocity Skag 52-inch, starting at $3,000. I have all the pictures for those, so I will put those up on our Facebook page and we'll take sealed bids and we'll open them at the next meeting. So we're just pushing it back. I just got busy, so.
Will that include the mowing deck that goes with the Cub Cadet?
Yeah, I mean, Jase said he thinks there's, he said he thinks there's a deck for it somewhere.
Yeah, gets in the water, going over there.
Yeah, I think that if he can get it out of there and get it over here, that's fine. I don't think we want to keep the cliff, so.
Anything else with toward the military department?
I have a couple pieces of new business.
Okay.
Yeah, Ford C is cool. Well, I'll probably do that under departments. Okay. Tell me when you're ready for me. All right. Um, so as I'm sure everybody saw on our Facebook page, had a lady ask if she could use a bouncer at the park. We do not have power at the park. We've talked about power at the park a few times. We've never pulled the trigger on it. We're not gonna pull the trigger right now for her to have a bouncer. I talked to the town attorney about this. It does present a bit of a liability situation. His suggestion is if she wants to bring a bouncer to the park, then she needs to provide us with a certificate of insurance. Like, like if you rent the South Vermillion Pool, you get a certificate of insurance on your homeowner's and they just cost you like 20 bucks and they just provide it unless she has additional insured. So that's, that's the legal advice on that. So I just need to know what you guys want me to do and I can reach out to her in however many capacity. But I did talk to Scott about that last week, so.
Mike, insurance is the number one issue. She has to have insurance before she can take anything over there in any public place. If you're gonna party or whatever, cook or anything else.
And I know she said she was gonna rent a generator. She was probably gonna rent the bounce house too. So it'll be probably a larger bouncer at that point in time instead of like a home type bouncer.
And that proof of insurance should be in before?
Yes, we'll need to have that in. I know she said her party wasn't until October. So, um, I can reach out to her and ask her.
Part of the use for anything during basketball.
No. Yeah, no. So is that, are we good to do that?
We're, I'm fine with it. We need to make a motion.
Um, yeah, why don't you make a motion just for, to cover?
I'll make a motion. She definitely has to have insurance to bring a bounce house.
Why don't you make your motion like going forward, should someone want to do this? You know what I mean? Not just for this one instance.
Yeah.
Okay, moving forward, everyone needs insurance to use the park for any type of facility, playground or anything else they want to put over there.
Okay. I'll second. Diane is our second. Your vote.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, yeah. All right, so there's my first thing. This is, we discussed replacing the gutter over there above the new mural. Jase has got the paint to paint the rest of that wall black. He matched up with Reagan, the artist. And so as soon as the weather cools down a little bit and he's freed up, we're gonna paint the rest of that wall black. But we discussed putting a little bit of a thicker gutter on there because it gets a lot of rain. And we had a gutter guy come out. It's an Amish guy. We use, I mean, Justin and I personally use them all the time, but they are really nice. So he provided us a price to redo that gutter and then to redo the one on this side. This side was of the town hall, it was damaged in a storm, so like half of it was just kind of ripped off. So there's a price on some gutters if you guys want to take action on that. If you want to get more quotes, that's pretty cheap, but whatever you guys want to do on that.
Incoming.
Mm-hmm.
I'll get it. I'll get it. Barb's down in the batch.
I'm down in the batch.
I'm not as down as, as I usually am. Maybe mom's bringing it down.
Amish guy now, maybe. I can swipe.
Are we having a painting party?
We, yeah, have a painting over there. Painting, well, he might be ready at the end of the week, so.
Mural over there. Wash it down. We like it.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, put it up again. Good job.
Hey, okay.
It's out of order.
Put it in, put it in.
So he needs to make a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
Just gonna get the map.
You need a second.
Diane's second, Barb's first.
I'd go on second. You can second.
Okay.
We'll make a motion to replace and repair guttering on the Marshall Building and the town hall for $866.75. All in favor?
Okay, yay.
All right. I'll let him know. He may be able to do this this week because he's coming here Friday. Do my house. So he might be able to get that done pretty quickly.
Cody, you still with us?
Yeah, I'm here.
No problem. Is he asleep?
Aren't you drinking plenty of bloods? And I mean water and stuff like that.
It made and I just took one ax load and so.
I was gonna ask that. He's taking.
That takes like. That takes like.
Did you have any questions about anything so far? Cody?
No, um, at me, would you want to bring out the, uh, water pump out?
Yes, I'm gonna do that in departments. Yep.
Alright, any other new business?
I don't have any other new business.
We talked about more money for the park. We do have, uh, a couple people coming. It'll measure for fence and we'll look at the basketball court.
Okay, yeah, you do that during your reports then?
Yeah.
Kind of resurface the basketball court.
I will let you know about what we're doing now.
So before we do reports, I do need you guys to make motions to approve these other minutes from the executive and the special. I mean, they're pretty simple, so. Yeah, so these are nice, so.
Okay, we have executive meeting, minutes, and special meeting.
Special meeting.
Cause we only approve the monthly, so we need separate approvals on these.
Executive meeting, the Rosedale Town Council held an executive meeting on Thursday, August twenty-second, twenty twenty-four at six thirty P M at the Rosedale Town Hall to discuss council member interest letters. Kirchhoff made the motion to adjourn, seconded by like Ago Ongfinger. Meeting ends at seven thirty, so. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Do I have a motion?
Make motion to approve it.
Barb's first and I'm second.
And we have a special meeting Thursday, Aug- August twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Want to read all that?
I mean, you don't have to read it. It's just that we discussed the sidewalk project and took action on that after we re-met with Brad Thompson and whatnot, so. We don't do a lot of specials or anything like that. But you, Kirchhoff made the motion to appoint Diane that night. We approved Kevin's letter for that. Um, Jayce asked for a metal detector. There's the gist of it.
Did he get one yet?
Well, they're not in stock, the one he wants. He doesn't have one yet. I gotta keep searching, so. He likes a specific one. The Alliance guy has a fancy one he likes, so. So you just need a motion to approve.
Need a motion to accept that one?
Yes, yep.
I'll do that.
Barb, you the second?
Yes, I did. I did, I did.
Alright, alright, those are approved. Now you can do departments.
Okay, departments. Water sewer.
Uh, I gave Diane the water sewer report for her to do that part of it. We had sixty-eight penalties, fifteen tags hung and two shut offs. Yes, we were really big meaties this month. Thought we did collect quite a bit and we did hang fifteen tags and we did shut off two houses. Um, one is back on, the other is still off. So, it, I know Diane's the water girl and the sewer girl. She doesn't really have much info yet, so. We are fixing a water leak right now up the hill. Um, the Haltons had a leak. We thought it was on their side. It's on their side and our side, so that's where Jayce and Gary are right now, is up there working on that. It was a little more than Jayce could handle, so we called in Gary to help him. Um, so that's going on with water, but in the meantime, we need water meters. And we have installed to date almost a hundred, I think Andrew's at ninety-eight, that we've put in. What? What do you have to say?
I don't like the covers.
Well, too bad. That's how they read. It's a composite lid. It can no longer be a metal lid. It's composite, so the cellular signal can go through it. Um, so we have almost a hundred in. They are pretty expensive. We have another ten on the way. Um, they're going out faster than we anticipated. At last, we have three hundred and sixty meters that we read every month. At last count, we have almost a hundred new in and then out of the two hundred and sixty left, Jayce had to read ninety-two of them manually. So that's ninety-two in and out of the pit and, I mean, he is a trooper about it and he's been great. But once it gets cold, we won't be able to open those lids and we'll have to estimate, which isn't very much fun. But we gotta do what we gotta do. So in the meantime, I've been looking for money, trying to figure out how to pay for these. Water has a water bond and, um, so we pay a four thousand dollar a month bond payment in water every month. The bond is set to pay off next October, so I sat last week and went through all the amortization reports and through all the things. And just to simplify state funding, when you have a bond with the state of Indiana, they make you have a debt reserve fund. So should you fall short in making your bond payment, you have like this emergency fund for paying your debt. So as your bond payments change, say you make the wrong one, you can move money from over there. So I reached out to Matt Martin at, um, Indiana Finance Authority and I asked him if it was possible to pay off our bond early using our bond account and our debt service fund. And he said we could absolutely pay it off early. We have a payment coming up on October first. He said he can work with us to pay it off then. If we pay it off first on October first, we have plenty of money. The bond payment, the loan payoff as of October first is gonna be fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight, sixty-three. I'm gonna use my calculator really fast. That debt reserve fund is our money. We put money into it for several years to build that up, so right now in that fund, we have fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred, twenty dollars and fifty-six cents. And in the bond fund itself, we have twenty-six thousand, one sixty-seven, twenty. Which gives us a total of eighty-three thousand, eight eighty-seven. If I take off this payment of fifty-five thousand, eight eighty-eight, sixty-three with the early payoff, that leaves us twenty-eight thousand dollars in that bond fund. It reduces our monthly expenses by four thousand dollars and we get that twenty-eight thousand dollars. That's a lot of water meters. To me, it's a no-brainer to pay it off. I just have to set it in motion, so I just need for you guys to decide. But I know Cody and I talked about it the other day. I sent it to him because I was like, I feel like this is too good to be true. Carol was on vacation. And I know Cody agreed, don't you Cody?
Yeah, I, looking at it, I was like, this thing's crazy, but it, it does. I mean, we have the extra money in there, so I think we should pay it off and.
Is that the only thing you can use that debt reserve fund for?
For what?
Like collateralizing a bond, basically?
Um, once that, we pay that bond off, that's our money. It just has to go into the water fund. We don't have to use it for anything in particular. It just has to go back to water because water funded it, so, yeah. But, um, but yeah, so, I mean, like I said, to me, it's a no-brainer. But I just need you guys to tell me what to do and Matt Martin will set it in motion. But that, I'm not saying we spend all that twenty-seven thousand on water meters. I'm saying that shores up our, our operating fund has gotten so much better over the last few years and we really. How many meters would that get us? Um, right now, ten meters comes in at about twenty-seven hundred dollars. Ten meters in lids. That's about what we've been, during our summer months when we sell more water, we've been ordering ten per month. We bought our initial fifty using some of our A R P money. And we do split the cost of water meters with the sewer utility because you can't bill wastewater without water. So we do split the costs there. I would probably, if we use that money to buy water meters, I would probably not try to split all of that out of wastewater because that would be a big hit to wastewater. But, um, we could buy quite a few. But just giving us four thousand dollars a month of not paying that debt anymore is really helpful as well. Because water operating usually each month brings in about thirteen to fourteen thousand dollars. Some months we're a little in the positive, some months we're a lot in the negative. Just depends. At the end of the year, it's pretty much usually almost a break-even scenario. We know we need to raise rates in water. We really, really do and we really need to look at that. But by paying off this loan and freeing up this money every month, we'll be in a lot better shape to start getting these replaced more aggressively.
Hey newbie, what do you think?
I mean, I don't, I don't know why we wouldn't. That's so silly.
I think it's a good idea. I really do. I mean, to pay it off and have that free money plus the four thousand dollars. You said we had what, twenty-eight thousand that would be ours?
Yeah, we'll walk away with twenty-eight thousand dollars from the deal.
And then the four da, on the four thousand dollars.
Free up the four thousand dollars. So I'll make one more bond payment for September and then Matt will start to close out on this. It's just when I tell him, so.
I'll make a motion to pay off the bond.
Yay.
Second.
Alright.
Diane's second.
Yeah, I think that's the smartest thing. I mean, with even just having the extra four thousand dollars in the fund alone, I mean, that, that could buy us double the, you know, pretty much double what we're doing on the.
On the meters?
Meters, monthly, anyway.
Yeah.
If we do another lump, kinda like what we had discussed, like maybe we do another lump buy out of, you know, fifty or so meters, that could put us in a good place to really, you know, attack it next spring as well.
I agree Cody.
How many more meters do we need?
Um, we're gonna, we'll be at about a hundred at the end of this month. We're gonna need another two hundred and sixty. So, we strategically, so when they first started going out, there was no plan. You don't think about them going out, but just to preface, right now they're radio read. They used to go through and read them all manually and open the lids. But then they went to radio read in two thousand eight when all the meters were replaced, so they have a little signal and they have like a battery in them. So those batteries started going out about a year ago. We started noticing we were reading a few. And Matt Kingery from Midwest Meter said, okay, you need to go, so we've upgraded to these cellular meters. And so the cellular meters are, you can read them all the time. There'll be no more reading, there'll be no more driving and reading meters. So right now with about a, she can read about eighty to ninety of them on her computer right now with the beacon system. We pay a little bit for that service, but it's been great. She can see a leak live a lot of times and she can get to a lot, they can get to a lot faster for our customer. They really are nice and, you know, they have a life of fifteen to twenty years as well though. So they do require a new lid, um, the composite lids because of the signal that comes through. You can't get the signal through the metal lids, so we are tasked with buying those and the lids are about forty dollars a piece. Um, but it, it's got it. We just gotta get them. There's no, there's no two bits about it, so. On the other note of water, um, the water plant furnace is down. It went down last year. We are gonna need a replacement. I did not have time to check with Andrews. They did give us a pretty good bid last year on it, so I will give him a call back and, um, see what their pricing is, if it's still good or if he needs to look at it again. Um, we had Dave's Heating and Cooling and they were a little bit higher and I know his quote was only good for like thirty days. So and Andrews may have been as well. I just didn't have time, but, um. Yeah, if you want me to get three, that's fine. I can get three. Um, the other thing on water is since the state of Indiana and the EPA wants us to service, they want us to survey all of our lead lines to see if we have any lead lines. I don't think we're gonna have any. But Andrea and I are knee-deep in, inputting from this survey we sent out. I know a lot of people watch these videos, so if you have a survey to tell us what your line is, if you would please get it back to us or even call us in here and tell us what your line is, if you know what your line going into your house is, if it's copper or pecks or galvanized and hopefully it's not lead. Um, we have to be, we have to have twenty percent entered, twenty to forty percent entered by October first. At the fifty percent mark, we can, um, apply for a grant to help us start. And they'll come in and they'll back truck and dig them and they'll just dig a hole here and a hole here. They'll dig three holes in your yard. They'll see what your line is. They'll see what our line is and they dig a third hole for some other dumb reason, so. And they'll just go through and they'll dig them and then they'll click the holes back. That's the way they do it. But we have to get to a certain percentage before we can apply for that grant, so.
And in January, the whole project will just kinda go away.
Yeah, I, it's terrible.
Wouldn't they be able to tell when they put the meter in, the new meter?
No, a lot of it's varied. You can't see it. So, we've already tried that, so. It's, it's a very arduous task. That's all I got. I haven't heard from Rob, so I can assume everything's good at the wastewater plant.
Marshall's way ahead of you, by the way.
How much do they have then?
I don't know. They're ahead of you.
I don't know how many lines they have.
Probably less than you.
Probably less than me, yeah.
I don't care about Marshall. How's that?
Well, it's interesting. You get points like, you get, like I wrote a little dialogue about us putting in the stormwater system. We have the street open, so we know that when the street was open, the mains were a certain type of material, so I can write a dialogue in about that and I get some points for that. It's like, it's like a video game. It's just really stupid, like, just do me now. Probably that's all I got.
Talked about the park already.
Um, Chief Department?
Street.
I can tell you this. Jayce patched holes. He cut down some brush down at the end of West Street. Dean called about that, but it was already on his list. It was getting hard to come out of Patriot Lane, the little gravel road and see and then it was all growing out to the road, so he did cut that brush too. Um, he tore out the sidewalk over here by the tree to get that, make that easier. He tore out the digger concrete at the park. He took that, those random concrete slabs out of the park. He also did that, so he's been, uh, busy on the activator.
There is, you know, ongoing trash and stuff at the park, but that's unusual.
Yeah.
Fire department.
Okay, we had one, uh, one garage fire, four medium fires.
Medical runs.
Medical, okay. Or medical, uh, one tree on power lines and one C O two alarm. Total of seven fire runs and, yeah. Police had two arrests and four warnings. You arrested two people?
Same house.
Oh, yeah.
Some days it's better to be quiet than running your mouth.
Yeah. Don't be throwing things either.
One burial at the cemetery. There's been some, uh, complaints about, um, flowers and stuff getting chopped up by the weed eaters and stuff, but. Once again, there's only so much room out there for, like I said, memorial. It's not your yard. It's not for metal things. Or there's several things that don't need to be out of the cemetery.
There are rules.
There are rules. They're posted on the Facebook page. We do have to go and throw a lot of stuff away. If there's anything that looks like it's worth something, it's put back by the garage, so you can go look for it there.
They're posted at the cemetery. What you can do and what you can't?
It's on our Facebook page and there is. It's on our Facebook page, and there is a post on that center line, Center Drive on telephone pole, it's there.
There's a sign.
There's a sign that says, no metal objects and stuff like that. No glass.
There's one at the far end, there was one at the far end, and one at this end, is it as well?
Well, there's two.
One way to turn in?
Yeah.
There's three signs, actually.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
And then there's that one posted in the center also.
If you junk it up, nobody can mow. You can't weed eat, you can't have all that laying around, people weed eating and mowing, I mean, it just gets hit.
What you're supposed to have out there is a hanging basket, a way they can mow around and.
One shepherd's hook with a hanging basket.
And if you have receptacles that are metal, it'd be best to go in the ground. But the plastic ones, once you hit those a couple times, they're just shit, so.
Well, and you get a big storm.
Yeah.
And you get some wind.
You get some wind, and then stuff blows, and we don't know where it goes back, so it has to be disposed of.
And they'll, and they'll take the flowers and just poke them in the ground, they, you know, those just.
They're just, you can't just put.
Explode when they're.
They do, they do.
Just explode, so.
I, I know they wanted to memorize their, their loved ones, but it's, it's really hard to keep it clean.
If you don't mow it and clean it up, they're gonna complain about that too.
Yeah, well, they do. A lot.
Properties?
Gavin, we sent three certified letters, we sent three certified letters with the new letter approved by Scott, I sent those out.
Talking to a lot of people.
Did I send those out Tuesday after Labor Day?
Yes.
Yes, I think, but we have not received any of the cards back on the certified mail yet.
Are we talking about that truck still down there, and the other, another, another truck?
I don't know for sure.
I'm just seeing what date I sent these.
It doesn't say on this receipt.
I think it was, this is thirty-first when I put them.
Yeah, the late, the date on here is the thirty-first, so I sent them out on Tuesday the third, yeah. Then you did them on Saturday. Yeah. No, I, oh, I, I gave all the council members a copy of the salary ordinance. Uh, I marked them as a copy for you guys, so you can start considering, we'll have to pass a new salary ordinance by the end of the year. Um, so that way you know what everybody's making now, it's already in there, so you can keep those, and you can, we usually, I mean, it's usually like a three percent increase, you can do whatever, but I just wanted you guys to have that in advance. So, next month, we will adopt a budget, you have any budget changes, let me know, any questions, let me know. I tried to account for some things that have been increasing in the last couple years, our interns seems to be leveling out a little bit. The electric bill at the town hall is definitely a lot higher than it used to be, but we should see some savings with our new street lights, that's why the electricity is so high. But, other than that, that's all I got. I think, no, I don't think so. Oh, I did meet with Scott Craig about some water rates, and he had done kind of a new ordinance, and it was like, it wasn't, it wasn't a full increase. And then I got to looking at it, and I met with him last week, and I realized that it was, he used the wrong math, I don't know what he did, but it was not, it wasn't, what he had on that was lower than our rate now. And so I don't know if he used a different ordinance for a different town, but he's revising that for me, so, yeah.
We don't want the bills, yeah.
Uh, the bills are down in front of Barb. So, um, so you can do public comment again, I'm done.
You guys have any questions over there to maybe?
Just when will the concrete, the sidewalk start?
Um, he's saying in about, he said about three weeks, I'm not sure where he's gonna start, I'm not sure what, where we're gonna go first, so.
But it's starting.
But it's starting, that's right, right.
Nothing else about properties?
No, not really. Yeah. I, I know what you're saying, Ricky, but, I, I know what your body language is saying, but we're, we're trying to work through them.
Okay.
Yeah.
You guys know about Talks Away Day?
Oh, yeah, when is Talks Away Day?
I believe it's the eighteenth.
September eighteenth.
Which might wanna say is a Wednesday.
Yeah, I'll post that on our Facebook page, um, oh, let me talk about that for just a second. So, I've been doing some looking, and I know as an admin on the Facebook page, I think Carol can probably attest to this too, it can get really exhausting. We tried to do a really good job of filtering, when you ask for approval, we're not being jerks, but there's so many scammers and spammers out there, like car detailing businesses and things like that, and stuff, so we're always declining stuff, we're not declining stuff to be jerks, but we're just, I'm like, this is not a real profile, or this is not a real person, or this is for Rosedale, Maryland, or, you know, I mean, just different things come through. And then, you know, we like for people to be kind on the Facebook page. We do have the option to go to a information-only Facebook page where people can't comment, where you can basically say, it's cleanup at the cemetery, here's your notice. It's, bills are due today, here's your notice, it's a town meeting night, here's your notice. So you can do that to make it a little bit easier, and to avoid some of the stuff we have to handle now, so. What?
The negative.
The negativity.
Rude, and rude.
But that's what, I mean, I know that there's other pages that are open, I know that, the, the page that Ken Taylor runs is the Isle of Rosedale page, and anyone can post anything on that, and that's fine, but I do see on there some posts that I decline, because I know that's not a real car detailing business. And I would hate for someone to send these people money and then be like, oh my gosh, that was on our Facebook page. But, it, it is exhausting, and we don't have to make, take action on it, but that's just something to think about. Like, I wanna put Talks Away Days on there, because that's important, so I'll, I'll take that post from the, you know, and everything, but, just.
I know there's been a few that I've looked at, and they're from, you know, United Kingdom, Saudi Arabia, it's places like that.
Yeah, I mean, you have just the things that come through that we filter, and then there are some places, I mean, if, we'll post for Little Bear every day, we'll post for Comar's every day, all of our local businesses, that's, that's a no-brainer. And, it's, it's okay to post for a Rockville business, but do I need to post for a Brazil business? Why, where does it stop? Like, where do you, it just, it gets to be like overwhelming some days.
If somebody's having a yard sale, I'll post them, but if they have a whole, like eighteen pages of the clothes that they're selling, we're not doing that.
Post that on your own page, yeah. So, it, it does, it gets to be a lot, so, so that's just something to think about, like I said, that doesn't have to be.
So it's like modifying?
Yeah, it's just, you can still have a town page, but if you look at the Town of Clinton's page, um, it's just informational. It's just, hey, we're having a meeting tonight. Hey, we're, we're fixing a water leak here, hey, we're, you know what I mean, that's all it becomes. It would probably be way less entertaining than it is now, but, yeah.
Might have to start watching the Isle of Rosedale page.
Yeah, watch that.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
So you guys have any other questions?
Can you make popcorn the next time?
What?
Almost popcorn.
No popcorn. I don't, we give everybody nins.
We couldn't hear for all the chewing, then. That's all we got. Motion to pay bills?
I'll make a motion to pay bills.
I'll second.
Well, Diane, welcome to the board.
Thanks.
Good meeting tonight.
I don't know.
I don't answer any silly questions either.
Make a motion to adjourn over there.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All-finger.
Aye.
No, I didn't, I don't know if I did tell you guys, I will tell you now, that I did confirm with the clerk's office that you do have to be registered voter, and you did have to live here for well over a year, so, to be on board, so.
Oh.
That we, we talked about it in the last meeting, and then I forgot to say that earlier.